Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of July 17, 2024 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcasted live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's website, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com-myglendale and on Apple TV, Roku and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city's website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/Agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaleca.gov. Can we have the roll call, please?
All right, Board Member Trachin?
Here.
Here.
Board Member Lee?
Board Member Lee absent, Board Member Minasian also absent, and Chair Shabazian.
Here.
Thank you.
Can we have the reports regarding posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for the July 17, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on July 11, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you for that, and the approval of minutes, and that is for minutes for May 15, the meeting for May 15, 2024.
So move.
All right, I don't think we need to take a roll call on that. Next item is oral communication. I don't see any that's not related to our items on the agenda, so we'll move to the next item, which is Board and Commission member comments. Do any of the, yes, please go ahead.
I have a quick information and invitation. The Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, in partnership with the YMCA of Glendale, is having a Filipino-American Friendship Day celebration. And this is going to be on Saturday, July 27, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the YMCA of Glendale. For information, you may contact me directly or any of our board members. Again, that's the Filipino-American Friendship Day celebration. We will also do the installation of our new officers and induction of new members. So come join us, we will have songs, dances, marienda, gifts, lots of fun. And the Hula Dance School of Glendale will be performing. These are children from small ones, too. They are award-winning hula dance group, and we hope to see you then. Thank you.
That sounds fantastic, I quickly took some notes. Thank you for that. All right, next item, we don't have any old business, moving into new business. Item A, 1601 West Mountain Street, and that is PWTF 002218-2023. Can we have the presentation for that, please?
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Chloe Cuffel, and I'm the case planner for this hearing subject, a new wireless telecommunications facility at 1601 West Mountain, above Brand Park. The subject site is located directly north of Brand Park on city-owned property in an area that's popular for hiking. The proposed facility will be located directly under an existing water tank, off the hiking trails and fire roads. You can see the existing conditions. The proposed cell tower is located on undeveloped city-owned land directly north of the park. The land is owned, zoned "special recreation", which is intended for public and private open space and recreational uses, and is intended to protect open space, natural physical features, and scenic resources. The proposal will not be detrimental to that use and is distanced from the recreation areas and designed to blend in with the natural landscape. Access to the site is provided via a 10-foot-wide access path that begins at the north end of the park. Access to the path will not be interrupted, and the project has been reviewed by the Fire Department. No comments were provided. The applicant also supplied proof of compliance with FCC rules and regulations for their radio frequency electromagnetic energy compliance report. There are, as you can see, multiple trees on site, as well as natural foliage. Urban Forestry has reviewed the project and had one minor comment regarding protective fencing, which is included in the conditions. The applicant is proposing a 65-foot-tall mono-eucalyptus cell tower and enclosed equipment, designed to provide service to northwest Glendale. The city of Glendale classifies this as a Class 6 antenna, meaning an antenna mounted on the exterior of a freestanding structure that has been specifically built for the sole purpose of supporting wireless telecommunications facility, using camouflage design that partially hide or disguise the antenna panels, but leave them partially visible. And we're here because all Class 6 antennas in the SR zone are required to go before Planning Commission. The proposed mono-eucalyptus includes 10 attached antennas and a 10-foot-tall CMU enclosure to house the required equipment. The proposed structure is located away from the hiking trails and is a desirable location that will fill a gap in coverage without reducing parking or taking away from the hiking trails. And noise is also not a concern at this location as the applicant has met noise standards in this zone. These photo simulations show the view of the proposed project from the north and the south. While there are obviously several trees in the surrounding vicinity, you can see that the mono-eucalyptus is clearly larger than the existing trees, and we did include a condition to ask the applicant to plant trees around the proposed. Here's another rendering, which shows how the proposal might be viewed from some of the trails. And for the coverage, here are side-by-sides showing the existing and proposed coverage that the new cell tower will provide. You can see improved coverage specifically in the El Merodaro neighborhood, as well as better connectivity throughout a lot of other neighborhoods. And for our code meeting, these have to meet our findings of fact for new wireless telecommunications facility. I've put the facts here for your convenience, I won't read them all, but staff believes that they have met all of the findings of fact, and therefore we are recommending approval. Again, I won't read all of these because they are standard conditions, but if you have questions about any of them, I'm happy to go over those. The first condition is asking the applicant to plant trees, two eucalyptus trees, near the proposed cell tower. And second condition is from Urban Forestry Department regarding protective fencing. Otherwise, these are standard conditions for a cell tower like this. This concludes my presentation, and I've received no calls from the public regarding this project.
Thank you for that. Do the Commissioners have any questions before we open public meeting? Public comments? No, okay, thank you. Then with that, I have one card, and that's the applicant, John McDonald. Hello.
Hi, good evening, thank you Chloe. I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding the wireless facility.
Any questions? Yes.
Just to make sure all the conditions of approval are acceptable.
Yeah, they are all acceptable.
Right, no questions, thank you. Public comment period is closed, no questions from staff. Do we have a motion to move forward?
I'm happy to move on this one.
Great, can we please have a roll call? The roll call.
Board Member Trachin?
Yes.
Board Member Fuentes?
Yes.
And Chair Shabazian?
Yes, thank you, and the item moves. That, we move to our next item on the agenda, and that is a similar project. Item B, 3795 La Crescent Avenue, PWTF 0018242023. Can we please have the presentation for that? Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. This proposal is also for a new wireless telecommunications facility at 3795 La Crescenta. And this facility is proposed on the roof of a commercial, existing commercial building. The subject site is located in the Montrose neighborhood of North Glendale at the intersection of La Crescenta and Honolulu avenues. The subject site is a commercial building with multiple medical office tenants that was developed in 1982. It is located in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone, where the maximum allowed height is 25 feet. Here are some visuals of the existing building. The site is surrounded mostly by C1 zone properties, however, there is an R1 low-density residential neighborhood to the south. It's a single-family residence, as you can see in the photo. There is existing mechanical rooftop equipment on the commercial building, and the site has a total of 32 parking spaces, and none of those will be interfered with, with this proposal. The applicant is proposing 16 panel antennas mounted to the existing parapet of the building and screened to match the existing building. The total height will be 30 feet. Again, the allowable height is 25 feet, and all proposals that go above that allowable height limit in the C1 zone must go before Planning Commission. Here are the existing and proposed elevations. These are just the proposed elevations, actually, of the building on top. This is kind of if you were looking at the exact intersection of Honolulu and La Crescenta. And then the bottom elevation is really more from Honolulu side. And then this elevation shows the parking lot side, so that might also give you a better visual of what the residential neighborhoods might see. Here are photo simulations seen from the section of, the cross-intersection of Honolulu and La Crescenta, and you can see that the applicant has made an effort to use material that matches the existing building to shield. Another simulation, and one more. And again, here is the existing and proposed coverage and the improvements in that neighborhood. Again, the finding, findings of fact, and staff believes that this project does meet all findings of fact. And we've included just standard conditions of approval for this project. And once again, I received no public comments, and that concludes my presentation.
Thanks for your presentation. Commissioners, any questions? No questions. Mr. McDonald, I have another card for you. Do we have any questions from Mr. McDonald? Yes, please go ahead.
Same question, that the
Conditions are acceptable?
Conditions of approval are acceptable. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. McDonald. Do we have a motion to move forward with this item?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Board Member Trachin?
Yes.
Board Member, Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
And Chair Shabazian?
Yes, thank you. Item C, citywide, PZC 00102024. Can we have the presentation for that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just give me one moment to kind of change up.
Thank you, bye.
All right. Sorry about that.
No worries, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you. Tonight, staff is seeing planning commission's recommendation to the city council for proposed amendments to the zoning code related generally to drive-through facilities in the city. By way of background, on September It is. Okay, hopefully they can hear me now, and everyone at home can hear me as well. All right, so on September 27, 2022, the city council first established a citywide moratorium on drive-through waiting lanes. It was enacted in response to a growing number of applications for drive-throughs in the city, generally modifications to existing locations as well as new construction. There were concerns regarding safety, aesthetics, and possible environmental impacts of this activity. The primary issues included queuing spilling over into the street, blocking traffic lanes, blocking sidewalks, and impeding pedestrian circulation on-site. The moratorium has been extended twice by council to allow staff time to review our existing requirements and develop an approval process and design standards, including access and circulation analyses. The moratorium is set to expire on October 17 of this year. During the moratorium, staff reviewed the existing zoning standards and approval processes for drive-throughs. We researched a number of other cities' requirements as well as their practices. There is a very long list, but some of the cities include Pasadena, Burbank, Santa Clarita, Huntington Beach, and Arcadia. We also prepared an inventory of all the existing drive-through establishments in the city, and our mobility section, joined with Public Works Traffic Engineering Division, have engaged a consultant to examine trip generation and queuing lines at different fast-food restaurants and drive-through coffee shops. Okay, so the amendments for drive-through establishments is proposed to be done in two phases. Tonight, we're here for Phase 1, which is creating definitions for drive-throughs, amending the land use charts to permit drive-throughs in certain zones as accessory uses, as well as prohibiting new drive-throughs in certain zones, and establishing a CUP process for new and existing establishments. Phase 2 will involve creating zoning development standards for drive-throughs, and that will be presented at a later time. The current zoning standards in place are minimal. We do not have a definition of a drive-through establishment. Typically, they're considered an accessory use to something like a bank or pharmacy or coffee shop. The zoning standards are limited with a minimum 60-foot queuing length from the beginning of the waiting lane to the order board, and an overall queuing length of up to 200 feet for restaurants. Drive-throughs are also currently prohibited in mixed-use and transit zones, as well as the downtown-specific plan. Currently, there are approximately 39 drive-through establishments in the city, fast-food restaurants being the most common use. Of those restaurants, there are also currently six coffee shops with drive-throughs in Glendale. There is no separate definition for a coffee shop in our code, and we're not proposing one. Typically, they're considered a fast-food restaurant or a counter-service restaurant, which is limited seating. The map in the slide illustrates how drive-throughs are dispersed throughout the different areas of the city, as well as the associated zones in that city. There's also a handout that we've provided for you at the dais that has just more details about those different areas and the drive-throughs that are located there. So the first part of the amendments includes creating definitions for drive-throughs. We're proposing two definitions, one for a non-restaurant and one for a restaurant. The non-restaurant definition includes banks, pharmacies, retail stores. It can include service uses. You know, we have one right now that's a dry cleaner, for example. The second part of this is amending the land use charts. We will be adding drive-through establishments, restaurant, and non-restaurant as accessory uses in the land use charts for certain zones, and we will be establishing a CUP requirement So this table provides a breakdown of the existing fast-food establishments and their zoning designations. It's, it also kind of highlights the main uses in each of those areas. Staff is proposing to limit where new drive-through establishments are going to be allowed moving forward, and we're proposing to limit them to the C2, C3, and CH zone being along Foothill Boulevard. Those are highlighted in green in the table. Most of the existing drive-throughs are currently located in the C2 and C3 zones. They have the highest concentration. The rows highlighted in yellow illustrate the existing zones where drive-throughs are already not allowed. So in the DSP, we have six. Most of those are banks. We are also proposing to prohibit new drive-throughs in the C1 neighborhood commercial zones, CA commercial auto zone, and the CR zone, which is the Montrose Shopping Park. That will impact approximately four businesses that are currently existing. They would be allowed to maintain their non-conforming status but could not expand over time. The next part of the amendments includes establishing a CUP requirement for new and existing drive-throughs. This process will allow a discretionary review for these uses, where today city staff has no process set up. There is no discretion that can go into these. CUPs generally are a public hearing process, and the review authority is the planning hearing officer for a CUP. Staff will have the ability to analyze different characteristics of these drive-throughs, including their operation, site conditions, any existing traffic problems or proposed traffic problems that are incidental to the use, impacts on the surrounding uses, and will also be able to analyze any potential to have negative impacts on the surrounding All drive-through establishments will be subject to the same CUP findings as any other conditionally permitted use, and we're also proposing that drive-through establishments associated with a restaurant have three additional findings that they'll have to meet. Excuse me. The three findings have to do whether, with whether or not there's adequate queuing on-site to prevent impacts to pedestrians and adjacent traffic flow, that there exist plans for litter cleanup, and that noise and light impacts are contained, and that the proposed use is compatible with surrounding uses. The CUP applications for drive-throughs will also be required to submit a trip generation study and queuing analysis with recommendations for improvement. These reports will be subject to the Director of Public Works standards and would have to meet their requirements. Through this study and the CUP process, staff does expect improvements to existing drive-throughs located throughout the city. As it relates to existing drive-through establishments that would be considered legal non-conforming, the proposed amendments will require these establishments to obtain a conditional use permit. Right now, in the draft ordinance, we're proposing three years. However, just talking about it, we are actually going to be recommending that change to five years. That'll give applicants enough time to come in the door and get this taken care of. For the existing drive-throughs, again, the CUP will still allow us to analyze existing conditions of the site, including what's going on with their queuing, and then impose conditions of approval to mitigate impacts. The amendments also include a few miscellaneous code cleanups, mainly just typos and grammatical errors that have been discovered as we do case processing, as well as correcting some outdated citations to Title V. So staff, along with city's consultant team, will continue working on Phase 2 of the ordinance that will include drive-through design standards that will be presented to Planning Commission and later on City Council. These future changes are intended to enhance the CUP process that's currently included in today's code amendment. The finalized zoning standards for Phase 2 may include minimum lot size requirements, queuing lengths, you know, menu board and ordering device location standards, as well as landscape buffers. Phase 2 will also review how these proposed standards could affect the existing establishments in the city. At this time, Planning Commission may choose to provide some recommendations to staff regarding Phase 2, or you can choose to wait till it comes back to you. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend adoption of these amendments to the city council, subject to any comments that you may have. And then, just by way of public comments received, I have not received any letters. I've received a couple calls with inquiries, but no comments either way in favor and opposition of the changes. That concludes my presentation, and staff's available for questions.
Thank you for that. We don't have any cards, so I think this is going to be more questions and
Callers.
Oh, of course, please, let's do that.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I do not have any calls.
Thank you for that. Do our commission members have questions from staff?
No.
I have a quick question. Firstly, thank you, guys. This is a very clear staff report and easy to follow. Most of my, I guess, remarks have to do with the non-conforming, the existing legal non-conforming uses. I guess my first question is, was this a council recommendation for there to be a CUP even if the project is already existing and operating as a drive-through?
It was one of the options discussed at the various hearings. It's rare that you're going to get a lot of new drive-through establishments in the city, and it's these existing drive-through establishments where the concerns have been coming up. So that's part of why we're including that in this, in this amendment.
Understood. I mean, I guess my only issue with it is that it, to me, it opens a slight can of worms of you can come to the city, get something approved, and then we're going to have it revisited. If it's a, it's one thing for it to be legal non-conforming, but you're basically mandating for the property owners to come back to the city and have it re-reviewed, and I don't know, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I think certainly the five-year suggestion is better than three, but maybe it's just something we can discuss further. I don't know what an alternative would be if there would be one, but that portion gave me a little bit pause or concern, but otherwise, I thought it was fairly straightforward, the other recommendations.
That's understandable. Just, I'm not sure if this will address your concern, but several years ago, we imposed a similar requirement for massage establishments based off direction from the state, where existing establishments were given a timeframe to come in and obtain the conditional use permit regardless of, you know, how long they had been operating here. So there is precedent for that.
And what was the time period we approved for that?
I would have to look it up, but it was probably three to maybe five years.
Five years?
Five.
Okay.
Yeah.
But do we have any guidance from similar cities that have, I guess, taken a look at this issue? And have they instituted a similar requirement, or is this just specific to Glendale and addressing our own residents' concerns? I just want to try and understand relative to what we're seeing.
We do have some of our staff here that did research on the other cities, so they could probably answer this question better than I could. My understanding is there was not precedent found in other cities, but I also, it's, I'm not sure if those other cities had the similar issues that we've been having, so that may be why, you know, it's not present in their ordinance, but I'll defer to the other staff members that worked on this.
Members of the commission, sorry. So a few of the cities, specifically the ones closest to us, Pasadena and Burbank, both have established CUP process. I think Burbank's is rather recent, too. So we're kind of taking a look at that, and we have a couple of bad players in the city, and they really aren't working with our staff or transportation staff in order to make any kind of corrections, because essentially, we don't really have any teeth to force them to make any changes. So the CUP process allows us to place conditions on things that if something goes awry, then we can revisit them and place additional conditions on those, on those projects to try to get them to work better and not block our city streets and that sort of thing. So we have, we have a couple of drive-throughs that result in a lot of overspill onto the streets and cause other issues with the rest of the traffic in the city. So we're trying to find a way that we can impose conditions on these to try to correct those issues. And so the CUP process is kind of the first step, and that gives us, you know, the ability to then regulate some of these drive-throughs a little bit better, and as we move to Phase 2, then we can start developing better standards that would then effectively help the other drive-throughs to operate a little bit more efficiently. So, you know, some of the things we're looking at is, you know, you see a lot of drive-throughs now where they have order takers outside, and that kind of does speed up the process. So those are the kind of standards that we can start imposing on some of these drive-throughs. And even the ones that don't have a large queuing lane now, some of those additional standards would possibly help those from spilling out onto city streets. And I did want to make one more clarification on the amendments, the minor amendments in the code. Those are not related to drive-throughs or the CUP process. Those are just kind of clerical issues that are in Title 30, so that's not related to the drive-throughs themselves.
Thank you. That's it for me for now. I can hold off until we deliver it.
I, I do have, I did want to comment. Thank you for this. And Director, I know exactly what you mean when you mentioned some sites. I can already think of a few, and I understand that when there is no teeth on, for the city to be able to kind of hold the site accountable, then it becomes difficult for the city and then for the residents, because it becomes a safety issue. And that becomes a safety issue for pedestrians, for drivers, and just, you know, overall for the neighborhood. So I think, Commissioner Chrockian.
I understand your concern. I think it's a, it's a legit concern, but I think this will allow our staff and ultimately citizens that have shown concern about some of the establishments to be able to kind of revisit, you know, as, as they mentioned, do a traffic study, and see how these issues can be addressed. And I, I think this is great. I, I actually, one of my questions was, how are we going to do it? And you guys just answered it so, so well. Yes, usually, you know, it's harder to go back to sites that haven't had CUPs, but I think five years is plenty of time to do that. And I think as our city grows, you know, it is possible that this site might turn into something different, maybe a mixed use, maybe something else. So I, I actually, I support the, the way you guys have put this and the recommendations. But I know that you might have some comments that you would like to address as well.
I, I'm good with the proposal, and I like the fact that from three years, we're moving it to five years. That's, that's the only thing. It gives the existing businesses a little bit more time to, you know, come up with their CUP applications, and it won't be seen as giving, us giving them a hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I guess one, just one thing, and this is my curiosity. What happens if a site goes through the CUP process and they're not granted the CUP? Would that mean, or is this something we need to revisit, or can the legal team give, give some feedback on that?
Well, members of the Planning Commission, Madam Chair, so basically, if the CUP and whether it gets approved is going to be based on, hopefully, concrete data that we get from some of these traffic analysis. And one of the things we're working on with our consultant right now is we're developing, like, different tiers of at what point, based on the amount of traffic a particular use generates, based on the data we've been collecting, what different standards would apply to that particular use. So some of the smaller ones that, that, you know, like a pharmacy or something like that, then the standards obviously aren't going to be as robust, because they just don't have that much volume coming in through that drive-through. So ultimately, it's up to the decision-maker, which in this case would be the planning hearing officer, on whether to approve or deny an application. And then we always have, you know, the appeal process that the applicant's entitled to go through, through due diligence, which then would come before Planning Commission on appeal from you, then it would go to the city council. So there's, you know, a few, you know, lack of a better term, bites of the apple for the applicant to get their
Because frankly, I agree with what's been said, and I'm fairly comfortable approving it. I just wanna make sure that we're basically not penalizing the good actors as a result of two or three that are bad actors. Is there maybe a way we can silo it if they're not meeting their initial conditions of approval, they have to submit a CUP? I don't, I'm just trying to brainstorm some sort of an option.
Well, I guess right now, we wouldn't really have any conditions of approval unless we apply the CUP application. So, that gives us the ability to, like I said, I mean, let's say there's, the one thing that we do have a concern with, all of a sudden, there's a change in use. You're gonna go from, like, of someone that doesn't have a lot of trips to someone that does have a lot of trips. So, that, by having the CUP process allows us to revisit that, and then probably maybe apply different standards to that use based on the chips they generate. So, that's what we're trying to get to with the studies we're doing is, like, we're really looking at three tiers, a tier one, tier two, tier three, and it's gonna be mainly based on the volume of traffic that particular use generates, based on the research that we've had our consultant do. So, we'll have a better idea of, like, if someone generates two hundred trips during a peak hour versus someone that's forty trips, then the standard we'd apply to that use would be, would be different based on the guidelines and standards that we developed. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but
Would we revisit that as part of phase two, or is what you're describing later on?
No, that would come as phase two for the revision. We just, I mean, we were planning originally bringing that forward, but then there were some hiccups with getting someone on board and, and getting the data we needed. We had some technical errors on the data collection, otherwise we would have brought it all in one package, but
I guess
Right now, we wanna make sure that, yeah, we get a process in place before the moratorium expires, and then follow it up with some really good design standards that we hopefully would satisfy the community as well as the city in terms of how they operate their drive-throughs.
Okay. I mean, with the understanding that there's some nuance, we may need to tweak and edit for existing versus new when we get into phase two of this draft, I'm comfortable with what's proposed here, so.
Yes.
And I agree with Commissioner Stephen. I just don't want the revisions to be seen as giving a hardship to existing business because they got successful. I mean, from the beginning, maybe we, we allowed them, and they're only having forty, you know, trips per day or so, and then they get successful, community love, you know, the business, now they're getting more trips versus the beginning, and it's almost like, you know, they're, they're getting penalized for being successful.
Sure, yeah.
So, that's, I just don't want that to be seen like, you know, like that.
Yeah, so our, our hope is that we can impose conditions in the CUP that would allow us to revisit certain sites, and then if we have this set of standards, maybe at one point, they didn't need an outside order taker. Maybe if they get the outside order taker now with the success, then that can improve the situation that we have, because you, I don't know how many of you use drive-throughs. I have kids that played sports, so we went through drive-throughs a lot, but when you hit, when you go to some of these places that take the order up front, then you're really just moving through a line. So, as quickly as these people are producing the food, and the line just simply just moves a lot faster, so that's one of the easier ways to address some increases in success on some of these drive-throughs.
Yes.
And it's really only a couple of them that are really substandard drive-throughs now that are really causing issues, but when if someone else comes in, that is a different use, then those will be probably a little bit more difficult to, to get through the system, I guess.
Thanks, and I, I believe when this goes to city council, upon approval, that's when the time starts ticking, the five-year time starts ticking from, from the time that that gets approved by city council.
It'll be thirty-eight from adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? And do we have a motion to move this item? I can't make a motion, I can't move, give my gravel to our Yes. I'll make a motion to move the item, do we have a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
With that, can we have the roll call? I'm sorry, you actually get to say that.
Wait, just to clarify on the motion, that the, the five-year amendment is gonna be
Correct.
Included in there.
Actually, I'm sorry, you get to, you get to say that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So moved.
Actually, I think we need to do a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
So, board member, or Commissioner Shabazian?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
And Chair Protem Chiracian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you, sir. With that, we go to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, sir. And that is the Community Development Department updates.
We do not have any updates at this time.
Any upcoming cases for the next hearing date?
The next hearing date, I believe, is July, August seventh. There is one item on the agenda for that evening so far. It is a parcel map. I believe that's the only item scheduled as of right now.
Okay.
We will be making, bringing back some more code amendments, one, density bonus, phase two of this thing. ADUs are coming your way, so there's quite a few code amendments that we're gonna bring to you guys over the next couple of months, I believe.
Thank you for that. Motion to adjourn.
I adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
You.
Thank you.